I appreciate your patience. Thank you very much. We're gonna try and get ourselves going as soon as I can figure out what side is up. So I'd like to call this meeting of the Town Council to order for Thursday, December 3rd, here in the Matthew Thornton Room. If you would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and I do apologize for being slightly late getting started. Things, as usual, run on a little longer than I always expect, but we're working on it. That was unintentional. Okay, by way of announcements. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, don't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to point out to everybody that we have, some of us have our masks off because we are socially distanced. So I just wanna make sure that everybody at home knows that we're not flouting any rules or anything, that we have spread ourselves out wide enough. That's why I'm over here in the dun- Nancy and I are in the dunce seats over here, so that we can (laugh)- only me.
Well, and then Paul.
You're in the queen B seat, queen B seat. So, so anyway, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that we're not just ignoring the COVID concerns.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it. I don't have much for announcements. Our upcoming Town Council meetings, Thursday, December 17th. As you recall, our November and Thursday meetings get shifted to the 1st and 3rd Thursday in order to have a break for Thanksgiving and for Christmas. And then our next meeting, first one of next year, will be January 7th on Thursday, which will be a budget meeting, and we'll be talking later today about the schedule as we get into budget season and all the meetings we hold in January. Eileen, did you have anything else to announce?
Yes, property tax bills were mailed on November 23rd and are due by December 28th, so sorry about that. We tried really hard. Paul was on the State Department of Revenue forever on the phone with them, trying to get them moving so that we wouldn't send out Christmas tax bills. You know, usually they're due in November, so sorry about that, but there was no way around it. The Public Works Direct Department would like to congratulate and welcome Shannon Sari as the new Waste Water Secretary. Shannon comes to Public Works from her current position as Records Clerk over at the PD. Shannon has big shoes to fill, replacing the soon-to-be-retired Becky Sullivan, who has been with the Waste Water Secretary for more than 48 years. On Sunday, December 6th, we will be holding a modified Holiday Happenings event. This year, instead of traditional parade, and I expressed this at the last meeting, Santa and Mrs. Claus are going to be riding on the Fire Department vehicle and taking a tour across Merrimack. We're encouraging everyone to come out and wave to Santa and Mrs. Claus from one of our predetermined locations in town. Santa and Mrs. Claus will pull into the parking lots of these particular locations for a few minutes to wave to families before moving on to the new next location. The event will run from 2:45 to 4:00 p.m., again, that's Sunday, December 6th. Please visit the Merrimack Parks and Recreation website for the complete schedule Got a lot of them. On Saturday, December 12th, from 12 to 2:00 p.m., we are hold- we will be holding a holiday drive-through food drive at Town Hall. This year, more than most, the need is great. We are encouraging people to come by and donate canned foods and other non-perishable items to benefit local food pantries. We'll have a special guest appearance by Santa Claus for anyone that didn't get to see him on the parade, at the parade on Sunday. We also want people to show off their car, all decked out for the holidays, for a chance to win a prize. We are working with the Macaroni Kid Newsletter, not familiar with that, and they will be awarding a family fun gift card, gift pack, including a $50 gift card to a local restaurant of your choice, Lego Land passes as well as Altitude passes. Here, another one. The Southern New Hampshire Tour of Lights is a free event and collaboration among nine communities in Southern New Hampshire. We are looking for Merrimack families that decorate their homes for the holidays and want to show them off. Residents are encouraged to decorate the exteriors of their homes with festive lights this upcoming holiday season, and register your address with the Merrimack Parks and Recreation Department no later than Sunday, December 6th. This will guarantee that your home is included in the official list of homes on the Southern New Hampshire Tour of Lights. On December 11th, the nine communities will publicize a master list of all the homes who are pre-registered to be on the tour. Homes that are registered will be eligible to win a raffle for a $25 gift certificate to a local restaurant of their choosing. And I don't have a Town Manager's Report, so this is all, these are all the announcements. I won't say anything past this. The Media Division is happy to announce that you'll be able to watch all three Merrimack TV channels in high definition via Roku and Apple TV devices beginning Thursday, December 17th. The app is free to download to your device. Aside from watching the channels live, you'll be able to watch previously-recorded meetings and shows as well. Next week, an instructional video demonstration will be available on all our channels, YouTube, and social media pages. For any additional questions related to that, please call the Media Division at 423-8561. Thank you.
That sort of combined your Town Manager Report. All right. Are there any questions or comments from the report, from the announcements? Okay. We don't have any specific recognitions, but let me check first. Are there any comments from the press and public at this point? People that want to address the council before we move on? No recognitions or appointments, public hearings, legislative updates from state reps. We did receive one from Representative Maureen Mooney, and I distributed it to the council, or it has been distributed. I just wanted to read it here. She said, "Greetings, Town Councilors." She was unable to make it to the meeting, but she did wanna share her thoughts. "The Merrimack State Representative delegation elected on November 3rd, 2020, was sworn into office yesterday and today by Governor Sununu. Dick Hench of Merrimack was elected Speaker of the House during the House session yesterday, 12/2, and this is a historic event for Merrimack. And at present, committee assignments and leadership appointments are being made. The deadline to file House bills is passed, but the deadline to file Senate bills is December 15th, 2020. Thank you for all that we do." This is Representative Maureen Mooney, newly elected, newly re-elected. She's been a representative before, Republican from Merrimack. So we congratulate all of them that passed in the election and look forward to an upcoming year. Especially congratulations to Dick Hench for his ascension to the Speaker of the House, and our condolences as well, 'cause I know that every arrow and barb is pointed that way at this point. So hopefully, his armor is well-suited at this point. Does anybody have any other comments that they wanna share? Okay, awesome. What I'd like to do, you don't have a Town Manager's Report, and we have no consent agenda, so what I'd like to do, given the number of people here, is move item number two under New Business, the Fire Chief Position Confirmation, up to take that in no count right now. So the Town Council did consider in the Acceptance and Expenditure... No, that's number one. The Town Council. Okay, deep breath. "Town Council shall consider the confirmation of the appointment of a new fire chief pursuant to Charter Article 7-8." So we've been for quite a while without a present fire chief. We've had ample services from people in the interim positions. But at this point, Eileen, I'd like you to go ahead and make your recommendation to the council.
It is my great pleasure to recommend to you the concurrence with me that we promote Matt Duke to be the new Fire Chief of Merrimack.
Awesome. Thank you for that recommendation. We've had a chance to speak with Matt as a council in an interview just before this meeting, and were able to grill him, so to speak, on what he thinks and what he feels is important for the Fire Department and how he has grown into it. Does anybody have any other comments that they wanna make at this point publicly? Finley?
Actually, I was just gonna move concurrence with Eileen on her recommendation, but I'm very impressed with... Oops, sorry about that. I'm very impressed with Matt, and I think he and his team will perform handsomely for the town, and I'm looking forward to it, Matt.
I'd like to second that. All right, so did you wanna make that motion, and then we'll talk to it?
I will. I move conc- I move...
To affirm?
I've moved to affirm Eileen's recommendation of Matt Duke to Fire Chief.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Barbara, moved by Finley and seconded by Barbara, I'm sorry. Does anybody else wanna talk to that? Bill?
Yeah, very quickly, I'm really excited for Matt and his family. Matt started 93? 98, thank you. Sorry, 3...
You're aging him already.
I'm aging him already. It's okay, we both have good haircuts, so. In all seriousness, he started as a member of the Rank and File here in 1998, and he's worked his way up. And he's probably what I would consider a firefighter's firefighter. He's worked hard, day in and day out, making him, on a personal level and on a professional level, to be the best person he can be when he puts on the uniform every day. And there's no doubt in my mind that the skills that he started learning back in 1998 that he's brought forward from firefighter to master firefighter to lieutenant to captain to where he is today, there's no doubt in my mind that he brings the necessary skill set to be able to do the job that he seeks to do, and to do it with professionalism, to do it with integrity, and with a tremendous amount of love and responsibility for the community of Merrimack. And I think nobody's better suited for the job right now to lead the department than Matt Duke. And he has my unequivocal support, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Peter?
Yeah, I just wanna say, you know, Chief, congratulations, and I look forward to you leading the Fire Department on a new chapter. I think you're gonna do a fantastic job.
Nancy?
The other thing I wanna say is, this is a lot more comfortable than in the room a couple of minutes ago, right? Not only we had questions, which he flew right by and did a great job, we also provided counsel, which he may or may not take, but anyway. We just wanna, I just wanna let you know that you have the support of this council. And we want you, I want you to know that we all, I believe, agree with the plans that you have for the future of the Merrimack Fire. So wish you good luck, and we'll have your back.
Okay, if there are no other comments. Lund, did you wanna?
Just a hearty congratulations and wish you very, very well.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take the vote so that all those congratulations work out really well. If I call the question on affirming the appointment of Matt Duke as Fire Chief, or I am calling the question, please signify by saying aye, if you agree. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? So that's gonna pass 7-0-0. Are there any other final comments that anybody wants to make before I ask Matt and his wife Lisa to come forward? So Matt, we're pretty excited about the position that you're gonna be taking, and I'm hoping that I can ask for you and Lisa to come forward.
I'd just like to point out that he made sure he brought his own badge. He's always prepared.
Yes, sure, yes.
Get away from each other.
We have firefighters here to apply an attorney if it happens, and two nurses. This is Duke to you and your son. Thank you for supporting Matt and all the other firefighters in the community. We appreciate it. We know it's a quiet, relatively quiet job that you have, being supportive of Matt and what he's gonna do, so. Thank you, and to your son, really appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
I'll see ya, Mr. Juice, too.
Matt, no, Matt Casperius. You're up, thank you. We're gonna move to item number one under Old Business, the 275th Anniversary Planning Update with Matt Casperius, to provide an update on the plans for the Town of Merrimack 275th Anniversary and a request for funding.
Yeah.
That just made it a different type of presentation.
It did.
Okay, Matt Casperius, our Parks and Rec Director, thank you.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to present an update to you. As you know, the town is celebrating its anniversary, 275th Anniversary next year, and a committee has been formed to begin developing the plans to celebrate the occasion. We've had two meetings at this point, and we're off to kind of a good start developing kind of the initial framework of what we're gonna do, or at least in theory, what we're gonna do. What we're essentially looking at is holding one kind of big event each month from April up through October, with kind of smaller activities scattered throughout the year, you know, as they come up. Each of the organizations that's been working to start planning these events will essentially take a roll, you know, each one will take a month. And, you know, so maybe it's Historic District will take one month, then Heritage will take another one, and Parks and Rec will take another, you know, just to kind of spread out the workload for everybody. We're essentially looking at the second weekend of each month, with the exception of the month of August, which would be the third weekend of the month. This schedule lines up nicely with several holidays throughout the year that we can potentially tie into. Obviously, the big question we face right now is where we are with being able to offer community events. You know, depending on COVID vaccine, when masks and large group gatherings gets lifted, you know, those kinds of things. So realistically, in the spring, it'll probably be kind of smaller, you know, events. Maybe it's, you know, Historic District has talked about a kind of a town-wide scavenger hunt of historic sites, you know, those types of things that individual families can do before we get into more... And then hopefully, by the time we get into the summer, you know, we have a vaccine and can hopefully get into, you know, bigger events, you know, what we're used to doing. We've had a lot of, we're getting a lot of interest from the community to help plan celebrations. At our last meeting, we had 10 people on our virtual meeting, which is, you know, and we've gotten word from actually several other groups in town that have had interest in joining, which is good and bad. It's nice to have the interests, but even that last meeting with 10 people on the call was a little unwieldy, and it's getting a little clunky. One of the topics that came up, kind of a little bit out of the blue last week, is a number of the people were interested in doing a fundraising program and raising money towards a gift for the town. If you call back 25 years ago, that committee at that time had raised money for the bandstand here at Abbey Griffin Park, and so there was an interest from a number of members to do something along those lines again. That wasn't part of what we've talked about, you know, the last few months, and so why am I bringing it up tonight, just to let you know that there is that interest in doing that? But the other thing that we kind of wanna do is, because that is kind of separate from the initial charge that we were given, is looking for the creation of a kind of a separate committee. Back then, it was a Permanent Remembrance Committee, and that was their focus, was to kind of come up with what they wanna raise money for and let them spend the year focusing on raising, because it really is different than raising funds. I mean, raising, yeah, different than creating events and promoting events and, you know, those kinds of things. And so that's one of the things I am here to talk about tonight, which is, you know, asking for the council to approve that offshoot committee that can kind of focus their attention that way. Probably isn't something they can do, you know, within 2021, but maybe as they come up or they start raising the money, and then early in 2022 is kind of their hope. With that said, and then obviously, the kind of the main original committee would focus on the events. As I said, we're kind of talking about seven events, you know, potentially seven bigger events over seven months, you know, that the main group would focus on and would kind of spread us out a little bit, you know, 'cause again, rather than trying, everybody trying to do both things at once, it just gets a little unwieldy. But with that said, we don't have a budget to work with at this point, and to do anything, we need funding. You know, there are certainly a number of free things that we can offer in the town, but, you know, we've talked about, one of the things we've talked about, for example, in August is kind of an end-of-summer bash, old-home-days thing, which is, I believe, what you guys were looking for when we spoke last summer about it. Again, it costs money to do that, and we don't have a funding source. But what, with 4th of July canceled last year, we do have that funding available that was never spent. It's $50,000. It's normally spent on the parade, the fireworks, and the Rotary Club's Family Fun Day. And so that was my idea. I don't know that we would spend all of that. I don't know if we'd spend half it. A lot of it's gonna be dependent upon when we can start doing bigger events. And so that's my ask for tonight. Like I said, there are a number of things that we can do as a community, you know, on small scale. You know, Parks and Rec can do stuff and work out of our own Parks and Rec budget, you know, for things like, you know, like one of the things that we're talking about is a 2.75-mile, not quite a 5K, anniversary race, you know, in the spring. And that's something, obviously, we're charged for, so it would be, you know, self-supporting. But if we're talking about fireworks in August, or a concert, or, again, it requires funding to do that. There are, as I said, one of the things we are looking at is, you know, a bigger event in August that would include fireworks, kind of an end-of-summer bash. We know that fireworks, based on what we spent on 4th of July, is $15,000, you know, in a typical year. And then whatever else we do as part of that event, obviously, has an added cost that we don't know yet. But with the 250th Anniversary, one of the things that was done back then was the town had sold commemorative license plates. You were able to put it on your front plate of your car for the year. The town sold them, and like I said, people, and the town spent $1,800 back then on it and generated about $3,200. And so there was interest from this committee to do that again. We have spoken to the Department of Motor Vehicles already and have tentative permission, but again, in order to order license plates to sell, we have to have funding to be able to provide the upfront cost, you know. And with that, we're looking at, the plates cost, it's $11 to make them. We're looking at selling them for $20 apiece. Again, 25 years ago, they made about a $1,200 profit off of the sales of those. But if it's something we can do now, the print shop that makes these, that's pre-authorized already by the state, can turn them around in about two weeks. So potentially, we could have them for early January, you know, so people could get an entire year's worth of using these license plates. Beyond that, we're still kind of figuring everything out, but those were kind of the two main things that we were looking for. And again, it's all gonna be tended on timing of when we can do big events. But aside from funding, I wanna just point out for anybody that happens to be listening at home, we have created a new page on the town website that, right on the front page, there's a link to the 275th Anniversary. We are gonna be starting to add content to that in the very near future. But we also have a Facebook page, which is Merrimack 275th, which, again, will start, as we start developing these events, will start featuring content, and it will be our two primary sources for advertising as we move forward. And with that said, I will open up to questions.
Eileen?
So Matt, have you spoken to Rotary, who usually does like the Family Fun Day and things like that, so we're not stepping on anybody's toes and everything like that? So as, from what I understand, Paul, we're now, we're talking about two allotments of $50,000, meaning the one that was for July, this last July, and the one that'll be for this upcoming July. Is that correct?
Yes, two different budget years, yes.
Okay. So I, let me get back to the license plates first. So I would highly recommend to you that you buy the license plates in smaller batches, because sometimes it's a big winner and sometimes it's a big loser. So, but anyway, so as far as the money is concerned, I think that I, it would, might be a good idea for us to carry some of that money forward that we didn't spend, but not to give a blank check. So when we carried it forward, then as each event came forward, you could come to the council and say, "Hey, I wanna do this. This is what it costs," and you can endorse it or not. So that's kind of my thoughts.
Okay, great. Anybody else have thoughts or comments they wanna put in upfront? Lund?
Yeah, I have a question about the...
Yeah, I have a question about the, the second group you want to form and what kind of projects or amounts of money we're talking about. Because blank checks. If you could respond to that.
Any more detail?
Yeah. The, there's been a lot of, there was a lot of ideas thrown out there. There was no kind of clear favorite at this point, but one of the ones that was mentioned was a covered bridge at Twin Bridge Park, which apparently there used to be bridges, covered bridges at Twin Bridge Park. But they were looking at some sort of, something on town land that, you know, would enhance the particular facility. And, but again, it would be upon them to do all the fundraising for it. It wouldn't be asking for money to pay for that donation. It would be, the money I'd be looking for for the budget would be more specifically for doing events.
Thank you.
Okay, so I certainly don't see any problem with. Peter.
Matt, I thank you for the presentation and kind of shaping things up. I appreciate that and the rest of the committee being involved. I'm looking at the events, and it just seems to me that's quite an undertaking to do an event a month. You know, hey, God bless the group if they can, if they can do it. I'm just thinking, is it too much to do? I mean, you've got your Fourth of July, and even a homecoming weekend, an old home days weekend is two, three days. Those are significant in and of themselves, so I'll be curious to see how it all shakes out, but it seems like quite a bit.
And if I may, you know, we, we first started talking about, at the first meeting, we were kind of talking about kind of like just April to June, and just keeping it real short and simple and, you know, smaller scale. And, but the problem was, again, realistically, the feeling is we're probably not going to be able to do any kind of public event that we can have. You know, we're going to have to control attendance and, you know. Does it make it worthwhile if we can only have fifty people and it's an outdoor event? Then, I don't know, you know. So that was why there was interest in jumping, you know, expanding the season to kind of the spring, summer, and going into early fall.
I mean, I'm certainly not sure, I don't want to be shooting anybody down. I mean, it's, it looks like quite an endeavor and, you know, hey, I think that if we can do any, I mean, if we can do a number of these, even, you know, that's great. If they end up getting them, take, being able to do them all, even better, I guess.
Yeah, I was, that was my bad. I was late getting it to Becky with the holiday last week.
Yeah, Bill mentioned it.
I was just going to suggest to Peter that if anybody can do it, I know Matt can do it. He's performed pretty amazingly over the years, I've come to recognize.
Oh, I'm not shooting him down by any means. It just, I'm looking at it, it's a good, it's quite a goal.
Well, Eileen did one time during a budget period say, no, no, we, we're not going to do those two programs.
That's right.
Do remember that.
He's got a lot of energy and a lot of ideas, and we really appreciate that.
Sure, go ahead. I did one second. Okay, you mentioned members. How many members are on? And how were they, was it volunteers or, again, it's just a curiosity.
Officially, officially, right now, we had two people on the Heritage Commission, although we're looking at scaling that back to one. Historical Society, and then we had Bob LaRue as a kind of an at-large, Barbara Healy, and then Paul and myself. But then we've recently had kind of a vet from the library join us, you know, or interested in joining us. We've had Lori Rothaus interested in joining us, Chuck Mower, Rotary, you know, and so, like I said, it just kind of keeps going on. Everybody wants to be a part of it.
But what's nice, it sounds like you're really getting a diverse group within the community, which is great. But I think you're right, having your concern about it becoming too wieldly. Again, my only suggestion is use that main group as a, as a total, but break it up into task groups. Because you're not going to be, you're not going to be as productive. Task groups are, you know, I'll do the event for May, you do it however you want to decide. But that's my only suggestion to you. But I'm glad to hear that there really is a diverse group of people there. That's great.
So you mentioned a couple of things. One of them was this, this other committee to do fundraising and stuff like that. Do you feel like you need an approval from us to form that committee? And does anybody have any issues or concerns about forming a committee to fundraise and come up with a, an item to commemorate the two-seventy-fifth?
The only, I don't have a problem with the group. The only thing I would recommend when they consider it, like the bandstand, it's something that's visual in the center of town. The covered bridge is nice, but who's going to see it?
And that was one of the concerns.
So I think the idea is wonderful, and maybe there is a particular site that could do a bridge. I think it's a lovely idea, but just, but that would be, not be visible.
Right.
So that's the only thing I'm thinking.
Eileen.
My suggestion is it should be something like the, like we do with the Agricultural Commission and the farmer's market, where all the money comes into the town hall. All the checks go to, are made out to the town, Town of Merrimack slash this, you know, fund. And that way, it's all, you know, nobody has to worry about their donation, it's probably tax deductible, you know, and that kind of thing. So, and we'll, you know, have Tom keep track of it for us, right, Tom? That's right. So I, I think that that would just be a, I think it would give everybody a sense of it's not just a bunch of people, random people that are going around, you know, asking for money, but, okay, so.
Finley.
I know I'm getting old, because twenty-five years ago, I was a relatively new selectman in those days when they did the two-hundred-and-fiftieth. They fundraised a boatload of money to do the bandstand. I think total money, it was into the six digits for sure. I don't recall how much it was. It did run through the town, as it should, for sure. And, and so they, you know.
Wasn't Ruth in charge of that?
No, Chris Christensen was a selectman. No, he wasn't a selectman at that point. He was. Of the committee, yeah, of the committee. And he, he had my mom, Lori, Ruth Liberty, Betty Spence.
I was going to say Ruth was a powerhouse.
Yep, yep, and there were a couple more, so I'm going to be bad by forgetting them. But, but it was, it was pretty amazing what they had done, traveling around the state, looking at bandstands. Had Jimmy Henness, who's unfortunately passed away since he went and cleared the lot over there. The town had it and didn't know what they would do with it, and so it worked out kind of nicely. So, so that's why they, you know, the talk of the bridge is, it's, the reason that has been contemplated is that that was the original road in town. That was the very first travel lane in Merrimack, and the old bridge still remains the foundation of it, the arch and all. And so it was seen as possibly a protection for that and so on. And I've recently walked the area, and it's kind of a nice area. But anyhow, that's, that's why I am supportive of the idea, even on my own, without my wife's telling me I should. But if it's okay to vote that way. But, but no, it'll be interesting to see. It's, you know, there's a lot of investment, I think, you know, Matt's ideas of making a longer thing are probably a great idea in light of our current situation and all.
And not being able to do a huge thing in March or whatever it is, yeah. Or April second. Very good. So I was just going to, I was going to agree with Eileen that, that all the funding and everything should be handled through the town, through the Finance Department as a special fund. And I'm all for it. Do we want to make a motion to allow formation of the subcommittee? Is there going to be a subcommittee in your mind, or is this just a separate committee?
A subcommittee.
A subcommittee of the two-seventy-fifth?
Because this way, the committee can keep the ideas, instead of having them run.
Okay. Kind of gives it some officialness, too.
I'd like to make a motion to establish a subcommittee for the purpose of fundraising for a project or anniversary.
A two-seventy-fifth anniversary memorial project.
That, yeah.
Or something like that.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made by Nancy and seconded by Barb. Do you want to talk about it anymore, Nancy?
I think it's pretty clear. I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, you have to keep it in perspective. Two-hundred-and-fifty was a milestone of the anniversary. Two-seventy-five is two, but not as much as two-fifty was. So I just want to question, you don't have to live up to that. That was a significant, it doesn't mean that you shouldn't have high dreams, but two-fifty is a true milestone, so.
True, but one's truer. Barbara, do you have anything you want to add? Okay, anybody else want to comment on formation of this committee? Seeing none, except Eileen. Okay. Let's, Lon.
I, I'm concerned about the scope of the fundraising effort and whether or not there's any details or whatever in terms of, so you establish a subcommittee, they establish a purpose for a fund. They have our blessing, I guess, with this motion.
Something like, yeah.
To start raising money. But if the project exceeds the amount that they bring in, it just doesn't sit well with me right now for those reasons.
Do you feel like you need more details? Is that what you're saying? Project details?
Two-hundred-and-seventy-five years ago, we've got the cart before the horse. We don't know what it is, we're really, yeah, we've had one suggestion of a, of a bridge across the brook down there, I guess. But I just find, I'm just uncomfortable with it the way it sits now.
Because this is just the establishment. It doesn't make any decision about what it is they're going to do.
Right. It's not the establishment, it's establishing for what?
Maybe Eileen has a.
Okay, Eileen.
There's no way that you can raise money for a, for something that isn't specified. So, you know, people want to know what they're donating toward. So I concur with Nancy, and both Nancy and Lon, that we should, you know, try and keep the scope of the, what it is a little bit lower than, than high, you know, so I don't know what a bridge, covered bridge might cost. But, so, so I guess what, what I would suggest is that you, once that committee determines what it is that they want to do, they can come back and talk to the council about it to see if you concur. And, and, you know, I don't know how you gauge, how you can, you know, how, how much money you can raise, because I know we went through the whole thing with the Veteran's Square, and everybody was going to buy all these bricks, and that never materialized. So I'm not casting a pall on this, no, not you, Paul, but Paul, on this, but.
You can blame me.
No, I'm not blaming you or I'm not blaming anybody, but it, there's just a practical sense to it. I think the town's very, townspeople are very generous. You can tell by the quality of the people that want to be on the committee. And so I appreciate what you said, Lon.
Well, maybe we can modify the motion to say, and any specific plans will be brought before the council.
Before the fundraising begins.
Before the fundraising begins. How's that sound?
I was going to suggest that.
Excellent.
So can we modify that motion to add that to it?
That's your amendment to your motion?
Yeah.
You can modify the motion, yeah. So the motion is more for an exploratory committee to define
Excellent.
a potential two-hundred-and-seventy-fifth memorial anniversary project.
And the town council will be apprised of any proposals prior to the starting of funding or fundraising.
Right. And does the second agree with that modification? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That, that's okay. Anybody else have any comments? Barbara.
Yeah, I, I think Lon, I think you raise a good point. And I think when the subcommittee comes before the council, they need to have a concept drawing of what it's going to look like, what the approximate cost is going to be, and what are they going to do if they don't raise the money? You know, and if they don't raise the money, what happens to the money? Just so that we're very clear about how that works when the time comes.
Are you good with being sort of a supercharge of this?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, at first you sounded like you were saying, we want to make a separate committee, and Paul's kind of said, but it has to be part of your job. And I just don't want to be throwing a lot more on your plate, since you tend to suck up everything.
Paul's involved in this also, so he's been, he's been on the committee. So the two, the two of them together won't only just be Matt, right, Paul?
Yeah, that's true.
We're going to keep Paul busy anyway next year.
But we want to kind of let them spend their time figuring out what they want to fund, you know, so I don't have to worry about focusing on that.
They'll do a lot of brainstorming.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Paul?
The reason why we're bringing this up, Matt and I talked about this after the last meeting, is because with the number of people that we had on the committee, it became two distinct conversations, and they kept on trying to, they kept on getting intertwined. Even though we were breaking them apart, they kept on getting intertwined. And there's so much to do with these events and events planning, that we felt that, let's keep the original charge to have events. And then have this, because this project, we know, is not going to get completed by April second. Unless we get a, the person who won the lottery decides to donate the project itself.
Yeah.
But, so we, that's why we decided to ask for this project committee to be formed, so that the people who are really interested in that portion of it can go and do that, and the people who are interested in planning the events and being part of the events, we can start giving like an event to Heritage and Historical. And now Rotary, we can give, maybe we can ask Rotary if they want to take the old home days up, because they were thinking about doing that anyways last year. So things of that sort. That's why. Thank you for letting me interject.
Any other comments? Call, vote on the motion to form this exploratory two-hundred-and-seventy-fifth memorial committee? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? So that part passes seven zero zero. Funding was the other question you brought up, and I agree wholeheartedly with Eileen that we can suggest that we have money in the budget that we could transfer from July fourth, and maybe even find a way to hold it over past June thirtieth by committing it to something. But we need to know what it is that we're funding. And so without writing a blank check, there's certainly, you know, fives of thousands of dollars available to be able to support purchasing license plates and things like that. At least that's where I'm going with it. We'll let the council decide if they agree, but I think that's where we're at. Does anybody have any other thoughts or suggestions?
Sounds good.
Is that sufficient information for you, or do you want something more concrete, more specific? Or is there anything more specific we could really give him at this point?
Can we get like five thousand dollars to start with? This way, we can at least get the license plate bought. There are a couple other events that we want to proceed with that we need to at least give a deposit for, to lock them in as well. So if we have like maybe five thousand dollars, we'll come back in front of the council and let you know everything we're planning. But this way, that if there's something that comes up, I know the license plate is one. There's a Civil War reenactment that they want some money and to lock them in now for the summer. Would be easier if we had, you know, some money. Even thirty-five hundred dollars would work. Up two, yes.
Yeah.
And we're not going to spend it just to spend it. We're going to look at some of these things and, and, you know.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for that to?
I don't think you do. I, I think as long as you understand that, of that, it's. I, I don't think you do. I, I think as long as you understand that, um, of that, it's, it's for cele, you know, for.
It's part of the stuff we s, we talked about back at the Fourth of July when we had cancel, or back way in April or whatever, when we had cancel.
Yeah, where we canceled the fireworks and everything, yeah.
That we would go forward with some kind of a program, and this is ideal, marrying it to the two hundred and seventy-fifth celebration.
So you start with the five hun, five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, and then after that, if, um, as you plan the events and you need more money before you commit to them, come back into the council, talk about it. This is what we want to do, this is how much it's going to cost, and then they will, um, and meanwhile, we'll set aside that money, we'll carry the money forward. Um, and you can approve them as they come forward, or not.
Would you say to imagine that you probably, after another couple of meetings, you, your group will have an idea of what the bulk will be?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, instead of, you know, every meeting having a little item to come up, and so I, I, that would, I think that would work real well.
And I want two of those license plates, so.
Okay. Yeah, I do too.
Um, I don't know how you guess how many to buy, but, uh, you know, I was kind of thinking you'd start with a hundred and go, but, but maybe there's a bigger number than that.
We're able to do it in batches of fifty, but I figured we'd start with a hundred and see how quickly they go, and, and if they start going really quick, then great, then we can order more within, it's only about a two-week turnaround time, so, and if it's less than, than, uh, you know, wait longer.
All right. Barbara?
Matt, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Too late.
But while you've got us all here, you, we had talked about the kickoff ceremony.
Yes.
And the New Hampshire delegation being invited. Um, do we want to do that, because their calendar is going to fill up pretty quick? In, in other words, you don't wait last minute to invite this people?
No, I know that.
So I figured if you want to broach that here, and if you don't, then I'll just be quiet and turn off my mic.
I, I'm not ready to go there yet. Right. And even, I mean, the committee's meeting again in next week and a half, week and a half, so, um, even then, at least I'll have a better sense of, of, um, actual commitment to these kind of monthly, you know. That's what we talked about in theory, but I don't want it to suddenly fall, seven events to suddenly fall to me, because nobody else is doing anything either, so.
You should feel free to come back and talk for a second.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, we can work it in. Sorry, I didn't turn the mic back on. Okay, so does that sound good? So is any, is everybody kind of in, in agreement that they could use up to five thousand dollars to get themselves started, uh, from the Fourth of July funds? And, um, the, the town manager obviously has the discretion to move those funds for this kind of an event, which we've all talked about and have talked about for months and months. So, any other questions for Matt? Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we really do appreciate your enthusiasm and your, uh, go-get-'em attitude about taking over projects like this, so thank you very much. Especially when you can't really host a lot of events as you've done in the past, so. That brings us to item number one under new business. I'm not missing anything, am I? No. Okay. A donation acceptance for the Merrimack Police Department. The town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of five thousand dollars from Digital Federal Credit Union for the Merrimack Police Department to support efforts in providing programs and services that make a difference in the community pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B and Charter Article eight dash fifteen. And with us tonight is our chief, Brian Lebec.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of town council, town manager Cabanelle. Before you is a request to accept a five thousand dollar donation from D C U. Uh, they donate yearly to us, uh, for various programs, um, and we use those, that monies for different programs such as the PAC program, um, National Light Out, other supplies we might need, you know, simple promotional materials. Like, you can't have a, you can't have a P D without giving away plastic badges for kids. So stuff like that to sort of foster a better relationship with the community.
Okay, so is that what your plan is this year, just generic, or do you have anything specific you would?
Typically, we just leave it generic, and as things come up throughout the year that's not budgeted, and it's a good community program, we'll, we'll seek the permission from Paul to, uh, use that money for that.
Okay, sounds great to me. Any other questions? Nancy?
Not regarding this, but have we given a plaque to the D C U? You know how we?
Yes, we have.
Okay, I thought we have, but I didn't want to assume anything. Okay.
We were talking earlier about whether or not we should give them another one every year, and just fill out a whole plaque, or whether we should give a big one with a bunch of slots that they can fill in, so to kind of anticipate the extra amount each year, or something. Well, yeah, they're going to assume that they're going to want to fill in the whole thing, but, um, with larger amounts each time. No, uh, we are, we're al, always open to consider that kind of thing, but we've at least given them one, and you said this is becoming an annual event, and, uh, we really appreciate their support for the community.
Correct.
Uh, and things of that nature. So I need a motion to accept the donation.
So moved.
Sounded like Lon Woods and maybe somebody else, but.
I.
Pete.
And Peter.
It's all yours, Lon.
So, so motion by Lon to accept the donation. Um, Peter, were you seconding it?
Second.
Seconded by Peter.
Was in units?
Trying, okay, I'm trying. These people go too fast.
If there's, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Thank you.
Chief.
May I?
Appreciate it. It's great to see you again.
Have a good night.
May I feature times when you come before us go so fast?
This was probably the fastest experience.
And our thanks to D C U for the donation. We did that. Brings us to a first quarter. Seems like we're a lot farther than the first quarter. Anyway, first quarter financial review. Uh, Deputy Finance Director Thomas Boland will review the key financial information of the quarter ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Once we can get all set up here. Tom, welcome. It's good to have you here.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to hearing what you have to tell us. So you have to start your dog and pony show or something to keep us entertained while it's warming up.
Just don't dance. No dance.
Uh, but I am here to review the, uh, the town's first quarter financial.
Is your mic on, Tom?
It is not.
Oh, well.
I will get this down. I am here to review the financial results of the town for the first quarter of fiscal twenty twenty-one, uh, which is the period July one, twenty twenty through September thirtieth, twenty twenty. And, uh, obviously, two thousand and twenty has been a year like no other. Um, and, and certainly with that is reflected in the, the first quarter's, uh, financial results. As the effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic have presented tremendous challenges for the town's first responders, uh, and it really had an impact on, uh, on all of the departments throughout the town to one degree or another. As you'll remember, the budget that we're working with for fiscal twenty twenty-one was first put together in late two thousand and nineteen. It was reviewed and modified by the, the town council in, um, January and February of two thousand and twenty. And, um, it was finalized at the deliberative session in early March. And it wasn't too many weeks after that that kind of the whole world changed on a, on a dime, so.
Yeah.
And certainly there has been lots of changes, um, since then. I'm trying to multitask here, and it's not going particularly well.
On what?
Gender.
Gender, oh.
Paul, I might need some technical, uh, help here. I can't seem to get the PowerPoint to come up. Maybe it's still loading.
Can see a new laptop in the computer, in the future here.
It's brand new, that's the problem.
Is that right?
Well, that'll teach you.
Eileen?
Are we going to get one of these new config, is this a new configuration, or are we going to get a new one? Remember we were talking about?
What, the projector?
The projector and the whole.
Yeah.
The, did we already get one?
I know, that's, uh, the old projector that's still up there.
Okay. Will that give us?
We're not waiting for the projector. We're waiting for the laptop.
The other room, we got that new setup for the other room.
Yeah.
So this, this, we're looking into some more different ones.
Is this our internet?
No, this is, uh.
Problem?
No, this, this is, the problem is, is that this is the spare laptop, and it takes some time to warm up when it's not used every day.
But I think we're.
Go ahead.
All right. Uh, looking at some of the, the highlights from the first quarter, um, the town's expenditures on health insurance, which is one of the larger, uh, line items after salaries and wages, uh, in the budget. Um, the, uh, health insurance costs are up five percent compared to the prior fiscal year. Um, but they are tracking, uh, below, slightly below budget. So in looking at the, uh, the trend is certainly up in, in health insurance, which shouldn't be too surprising uh, over the last three years. Uh, looking at this year versus the, the prior year's first quarter, uh, the expenses are up five percent, uh, due to the rates going up slightly, uh, but mainly due to a higher number of full-time employees, uh, on our, our health insurance census, uh, in the, in the current year, as we made some staffing increases.
So you said it's tracking lower than the budget. What, what could make it track lower than the budget?
Um, it's really that some of the budgeted full-time positions, uh, are, were unfilled for that first quarter.
Oh, okay.
So that brings us down, uh, in line or slightly, uh, below budget.
But at this point, it's a fixed cost, right? I mean,
Yes.
unless we hire extra people and, and bring on more insurance requirements.
Right. And is not really impacted by COVID. One of the few things that's not.
Eileen?
Just, just one other thing. Uh, people can change, so a person can, can get married during the year, and it can change, or they could have a baby, and it can change from a two-person to a family, or to, from, which is a, is a significant amount of money for just one. One change, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is part of the reason for the increase over the prior year, too, is we do have a slightly richer mix of family and two-person plans versus, uh, single plans than what we had in the prior year. I guess I don't really need this at this.
We're reasonably clear when we budget what we have, but as you said, during the year, the changes, those kind of changes can happen.
Right.
And as we have retirements and replacements, they could come in either as family or individual or whatever, and, and go out the same way, so it's a little flexible.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next up is, uh, New Hampshire Retirement, our town's contributions to the retirement system on behalf of its employees. Similar to insurance, they're up from the prior year, uh, but they are tracking under budget. The rates for twenty twenty-one versus nineteen twenty are unchanged. But we do have a higher number of full-time employees. Uh, in addition, as you'll see on the next slide, uh, we've got a significant increase in overtime expenditures, uh, townwide, and that increases our, uh, required contributions to N H R S as well.
Okay, that was going to be my question. Go ahead, Eileen.
We're getting reimbursed for a lot of that, aren't we?
Uh, certainly for the overtime, uh, Paul would know better than I.
Yeah, the overtime and, yeah, I would be.
With retirement costs and all that stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yes, that would be the case.
Okay, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to kind of put it in perspective. When you see these large numbers, they're, they're not reflective of all the, what do we get, six hundred thousand dollars from, um, from federal government, uh, through the state? So, um, even though they look really high, there are revenues, um, to offset many of them.
Finley?
But that number under FIRE, um, that, that, still that whole item is under, it's under budget?
Uh, not for FIRE itself, but overall.
In totality, it is, okay, because that's a monster's job. That's huge.
Yeah.
Well, that was going to be my question. With all that overtime that we're paying FIRE right now, does that in fact require a contribution to the retirement system, and you, you said that's true, that all of their salary, not just their base salary, is calculated into that?
Right, and, but I thought that, I thought just that one alone would put the entire line over budgeted.
Yeah.
Even though it would be, you know, refunded when we get those in, but on the budget, which I thought it would be over, just my.
Yeah. Paul?
Also, don't forget, you budgeted a large amount of overtime increase last year in the FIRE department, almost a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So that also has a relationship to New Hampshire retirement when we budgeted for it. So that, that's why it looks like the New Hampshire retirement line across the board is okay, is because we already budgeted for these increases. This isn't, there, yes, COVID, there's some overage in overtime because of COVID, but we've had a large budget increase for New Hampshire retirement as well, because of the overtime that we had planned in the budget for twenty twenty-one.
Eileen?
Might, might I suggest that, um, from now on, we not only do comparisons to prior years, it more, might be more relevant to show budget to actual as well? Yeah.
Makes sense.
All right.
That would help, yeah. Thank you.
All right, speaking of big numbers, this is, uh, this is what overtime, uh, looks like. And, uh, you can see the, the, uh, the real tall towers are, uh, are from the FIRE department. Um, as Paul just said, uh, some of that was planned and budgeted overtime increases, um, as a result of, of, uh, trying to maintain, uh, the desired levels of, of coverages throughout the town. Um, and, and certainly some of it is, is COVID-related, although then, as Eileen mentioned, there are, uh, offsetting grants and reimbursements for a lot of that type of stuff, so. That is where we are. Uh, there are also increases in overtime, uh, for communications, highway, and solid waste, uh, which are primarily, uh, COVID-type related, uh, increases. Overtime in the police department is actually down compared to the prior year, which, uh, reflects the staffing increases that the, the police department has had, as well as there, there's less overtime for, uh, court hearings and, and testimony, because the courts were closed for the first quarter, so. Uh, we may see that tick back up again, uh, down the road.
Uh, I just wanted to ask Paul, um, from a county perspective, when you receive that money in, do you apply it toward the expenditures thereby netting them out? Or do you show the gross expenditure and then, um, show the revenue as, in gross revenue as well?
Right, we do gross versus gross because of the way you have to in the state of New Hampshire.
It's very gross.
Yes.
I kind of had to say that, sorry.
Yeah. Because of the way the state of New Hampshire laws about gross appropriating.
So, what was happening in communications and highway and other departments that they had an increase in overtime, other than COVID? I mean, even how did COVID drive the overtime? Any idea?
Um, well, I think in, in highway, you had some, um, some work required to, uh, close down the parks uh, and things of that sort, that I think resulted in, in higher overtime. Solid waste, I think we started the, uh, we started the Thursday night, um, extended hours earlier, uh, this year due to COVID. That results in, uh, in additional overtime as well.
And, and as you recall, we had a lot of overtime on, um, on the weekends this past summer, um, at, at Wildcat Falls, at,
Oh, yeah.
Um, at Watson Park, uh, and those various things, so, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted anyone. Yeah, I just wanted anyone who happened to see this or hear this conversation to understand what was driving the overtime, particularly in those departments that may not usually have
Right.
any extensive overtime budgeted or experienced.
Yeah.
I, I would also like to remind the council that anytime we have to cover somebody on a Saturday for solid waste, even though it's regular hours for solid waste, it's overtime because usually the coverage comes from highway and they already worked their 40 hours. So, and we did have a couple of gentlemen that were out in solid waste for a while during the COVID period, unrelated, but, so we were covering those shifts and that's 100% overtime versus last year in solid waste. And that's why solid waste is always a tricky number to budget for overtime because if somebody takes time off, usually if they backfill it, it's on an overtime shift on a Saturday. So.
Okay, taking a look at the revenue side of the equation. Good news is that auto registrations continue to chug along. And building permits are more or less flat from the prior year. The, the one issue we have on the revenue side is with interest income, which I think everybody is, is pretty aware of. But. The, the, yeah, the line disappeared. When, when the budget was put together back in late 2019, we were getting close to 2% interest on our, our cash balances. And then in April, when the Fed cut interest rates, Fed funds to zero, over the course of the next couple of months, very, very quickly, rates plummeted and we're, we were getting 0.2% on our interest. So our, our interest income went down by a factor of 10. And that's what's reflected here. We did revise those revenue estimates downward in the spring when we had the chance, going through the, the tax rate setting process. But we're still not gonna make even the revised estimates. We're gonna be more than a couple hundred thousand dollars short in, in interest income. We do believe that, that we'll have offsetting revenues to compensate for that in terms of higher auto registrations if they continue to, to go at the current pace, as well as some of the COVID grant money and some reimbursements from insurance companies that, that we're expecting in the current year. So something we're keeping an eye on as we are with the, with the entire budget to, to, to stay on top of it. But at this point, things look, look good. Yes. Yeah, I mean, it, it's going to, you know, a lot of it will depend on what kind of a winter we have, what kind of money we need to spend to plow and buy salt and sand and things of that sort. So it, we'll have to stay right on top of it, but so far, so good.
Tom, and this is, I guess, I'm, you know, this is obviously is my field of expertise, but the interest pooled cash. So we're only looking at, money goes into interest-bearing accounts, so that's where. Can you take any of that money? Can it be invested in the general market itself?
No.
Okay, so there are like rules or laws that, okay.
Yeah, has to be fully collateralized, really cash basis type investments. I mean, we could do CDs and things of that sort, but there's, there's no, there's no money to be made in CDs at this point. All the money we have at the moment is, is 100% liquid. Tying it up for longer periods of time doesn't really add anything to the equation right now, so it doesn't make sense to, to do that. Correct. That was really all I had, but if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to try and answer.
So the, so generally, we're doing well.
Yes.
As always, we have to keep a close eye on it because anything could change. As we found out back in March of this, of this year.
Right.
Although we sure hope nothing goes that dramatic, but, but we're still struggling our way through that at this point. So is everybody. I mean, and the town's probably a little better off than, than most because we tend to be trailing indicators of problems. And if, if the issue's gonna be bad for us, it's probably gonna be bad for us in the next year or two, not, not the year the thing happens. But are there any other questions relative to the first quarter review? Saying none, thanks, Tom. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Which brings us to, yeah, he's gonna have to stay here anyway, so. We, we talked about that already. The, the review of the 2021-22 budget schedule submitted by Town Manager Eileen Cabanelle and Finance Director Paula T. McKelley and Assistant Town Manager, the Town Council to review the 2021-22, there's too many twenties in there, budget schedule. So a, as you'll see in here, and I don't know if, Eileen, if you want to take this or, no, Paul will take it?
Basically, what I, what I did is we, last year, the, I believe the year before that, we went to a Wednesday-Thursday schedule. And that seemed to work out well for the council and the budget process because it was a kind of a back-to-back night and we were able to get people in and go over the budget and things of that sort. So that's what I prepared here. With the schedule, we'd start on January 7th, 13th, and 20th would be the three budget meetings that we had with departments to review the items. Built in two snow days because anything could happen as we know with COVID and things of that sort. So I decided to build in two snow days. If we don't need them, we'll move up the finalization. If we do need them, we'll just swing things around. And then the deliberatives, the public hearing would be February 11th to go along with regulations. And then, I hate to say this, but March 10th, we're looking at our, our deliberative session. And the 12th would be our continuation. I reached out to the school because the next two years, we're actually gonna have the deliberative session on the same week because of the way that March falls. And then after that, we'll go back to having it on our own, we could have it on, we'll be on our own week and they would be on their own, own week. Ours deliberative session is, is basically stated in our charter, which between the second and Tuesday and the, and that following Saturday, we, we are specified to have it. So we can only have it on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. We only have four days to have ours. Where the school has basically a week to have theirs. It goes from the first Saturday in March until the following Saturday. So they have basically a whole week to have theirs, where we, in our charter, we have four days. So that's why I did the Wednesday, Wednesday, Friday for, for our deliberative session. And then the other important date is April 13th is the election, and hopefully that won't be postponed till June 27th again. So, sorry, but. And, and, yeah, it was, it was crazy for, for everybody. And I think that was part of the reason our, our, our tax rate was delayed is because everybody was, at that point, it was just crazy for DRA and stuff wasn't getting in on time. And stuff they had May and June and July to look over, they didn't get until July and August. So.
And they're also still working from home.
Yes.
Which is ridiculous.
Working from home with no phone access to their desk phones.
This is our state, huh?
Yep, the state, actually, most departments in the state are still closed. Department of Motor Vehicle, I think, is by appointment only in Concord.
Yeah, that's what I was hearing from people whose kids are trying to get driver's licenses.
Right, so. But back to the budget schedule. I, if, if it so moves the council, I would like to stay with the Wednesday-Thursday schedule. It works out a lot better. I did the Monday-Thursday schedule that we had years ago and it really condenses the amount of time and we don't have any built-in days basically if it snows. Because you have a holiday in there. You would have to start up basically right after New Year's Eve. It would be, it'd be what, the, the third or, or second, or the third, third or fourth of January would be the first meeting and you would have to be constant with it right after that. So.
So I, I don't know how much you've had a chance to review this, but obviously the question is, is, is the council comfortable with this? We'll be getting the budget coming to the council on the 17th of December, which is our next meeting, I guess.
Correct.
And, and then we'll have Christmas to review it. And Christmas and New Year's, I mean, might as well give ourselves a whole week. And then start up on January 7th. I kind of like January 7th versus the second or something like that. So I'm comfortable with that. But does anybody have any other thoughts or concerns specifically on the schedule? And also, you can look at who's coming in when, if you have preferences there, we can discuss that as well. Nancy?
Invariably, we have changes because this is the first. So the only thing I can think of is I'm gonna go home and get my calendar, put it on, and if there's any problems, then let's just let Paul know and he can do a revised calendar. Oh, let. Hold on, Eileen, Eileen and me, look at this. They're both doing like this. We'll give it to you, Eileen, that you can give to Paul, however. But it would be nice, the only thing I request, because last year, I think this was changed three times.
Yes, it was.
So what I'm asking is if everyone can be diligent so that when we do change it, it'll be one-time change for everybody.
I already did, it's on my calendar.
Okay, so you, you've had this now for a few days at least. But, but please.
Huh? I haven't reviewed it yet, but I will.
You haven't reviewed it. So, so please take a look at it. If you have an issue, let us know in the next week so that by the next meeting, we can have it completely finalized. But I, I reviewed it quickly and I've kind of written off the month of January in my life anyway. So, so I don't have any problem with that. And having two snow dates available is a good idea because we never know. And last year, about this time, we had, what, eight or 10 inches of snow out there? This year, we don't, so great. Next Saturday. The, yeah, and the March 7th or March 10th, you know, there's not much we can do about that, I don't think. Pointing out that, when did I see it? The filing period for candidates running for office is February 24th to March 5th. So just, everybody needs to keep that in mind if they're planning to run for town council.
Now, you're up, Tom, right? I'm up. Who else? Pete?
Pete is up, I think.
So there's three of us.
And so otherwise, it, it looks fine to me. Does anybody else have any thoughts beyond what Nancy said? Bill?
Just a question regarding the deliberative session. Are we gonna be planning contingency if we're not out of this pandemic by then?
If we're not out of the pandemic, the governor will give us guidance and the Secretary of State's office will give us guidance on what we can and cannot do. What happened last year, we were fortunate, basically as, as Tom said, we got our deliberative session in and then right after that weekend, that Friday, it hit the fan. And what happened to those communities that did not have their deliberative session, they got postponed legally by the governor through his emergency order. And then once they could have them again, they were able to have them with, with some contingencies of people and Zoom. And there, there was a bunch of things that they had to do to, to have their deliberative sessions. So if, if by March 10th, if we're shut down again, the governor and his, his emergency order will end and the Secretary of State will lay out what we have to do. And we'll have to rely on them and win.
That's a really good question, though, because at this point, even with the vaccines coming out, we're not gonna see widespread utilization of that by, by March.
We did, years ago, there was a need because of the turnout to have a town meeting. I think it was town meeting days, we had it in three rooms over what is now the upper elementary and elementary schools. So with distancing of chairs, unless they make it, so it has to be 10 or 12 feet, as long as it's six feet, it would, it would be a nuisance, but we could do it. Malloy, that's where we started using Malloy Sound Company there. So I'm not worried about it.
Not worried, but it is something to consider.
We have to plan for it.
We have to plan for it, yeah.
Well, we, we have the space. We have to just know that we're gonna have to book it, have those opportunities.
I was just being kind of sarcastic this, because you can't really plan for anything these days, right?
You're right. You're right.
Okay. If, if there's no other questions, we'll, we'll assume this is the schedule until somebody comes up with a dire need to make a change. Okay, but, and, and the thing that's important here for us especially to think about, because none of, none of the back pages can we change, is just the January schedule for meeting with the different departments. And the, the big ones are spread out. Fire comes in first, police comes in second, and then Department of Public Works comes in on the third day. And sprinkled in amongst that are, are the smaller departments, not that they're less important, folks, but.
They're smaller in size.
Their budgets are a little smaller and so it's a little bit easier to go through their, their numbers. So I, I think that's good at this point. If there's no other discussion, we'll move on.
Mr. Chair, may I? So on the 17th, as you said, we're giving you the budget presentation. Once again, we'll be giving out the USB drives and the books. All I would like to ask is that if somebody doesn't want a book, just let me know. I plan on making everybody a book right now, but if somebody doesn't want a book, that will save a tree. So if you don't want a book, just let me know and I won't print you up a book if you.
So he's making them by default. If you, if you're not gonna take it, let him know.
Like myself, as you know, you have to always make copies for me because they disappear somehow.
But, you know, making 11 books at 250 pages in it is a tree. So if I make 11 versus 12, and that's all I'm saying, so if somebody doesn't want one.
I, I don't need one. I find that the electronic version is much easier to handle.
He's the high-tech person.
However.
To talk about a change, huh?
I need the line so that, I need the freeze line there, freeze bar, whatever you call it, so that my head, my header stays where I can scroll through it and see.
It's under your control, Finley.
I know, every year I do it myself and then when I redo the, you know, reformat it or re-opulate it for me, it's, you know, it's a mess. I have to go do it again.
I'm so impressed.
We'll do that for you, Finley, if it doesn't happen.
I am so impressed.
Yes, Finley, we'll do that for you.
The last guy with the flip phone.
I have a BlackBerry.
Oh, gosh. I had a Palm Pilot. It wasn't a car.
All right, now that we've compared all our tech. All right, so Paul, thank you. You're gonna have it on the USB drives and, and books as necessary. I'm, I'm debating yet whether I'll, I, I missed having a book last time, but I didn't want to carry it around either, so. Anyway, okay, so we'll move along. Item number five under new business, Town Council to review, let me see what it said in our agenda. To review and consider the approval of the town's investment policy for the investment of public funds held by the town treasurer in accordance with RSA 35:9 and RSA 41:29 for fiscal year 2021-22. And I believe we have Mr. Boland coming to present the investment policy to us again.
This is more or less a housekeeping item. The investment policy that you have is the same investment policy that we have had. There's no changes being recommended. It's just that our auditors want to make sure that we're in compliance and get this formally reviewed on an annual basis. So something that they look for when they come in and do their, their work.
For the benefit of the audience and those that haven't been paying attention to this over the years, this is a, this is every two years we need to, to reapprove this, is that right? Or is it annually?
Annually.
Annually?
Yeah.
Okay. And it was brought up as part of our annual audit. You were saying that
Yes.
we need to make sure it happens, whether we're, are we delayed this year because of COVID and various assorted other things? Or are we kind of on time and they just wanted to make a point?
We've been following the same one for years, so this is really.
We've been following the same one for years, so this is really just a housekeeping. We usually do it in November, October, November timeframe, so we're delayed about a month due to my.
COVID distractions, come on, Paul. Use it for whatever you can.
Yeah, my COVID distractions, there I go. It didn't show up on my calendar in time.
All right, so can you just briefly run through what the investment policy is for our audience? Or do you have a copy of it?
I do not.
Can I grab one from you, Paul? We have extra copies. There's in the back of here. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I realize, because I realize it's, it's pretty much a housekeeping deal, but we, we are televised. We don't have very much public coming to our meetings anymore.
Right.
So just for, just for fun.
Sure, okay. The town in Merrimack investment policy. This investment policy applies to all public funds held by the town treasurer in accordance with RSA forty-one colon twenty-nine and to capital reserve funds held by the trustees of trust funds in accordance with RSA thirty-five colon nine. Deposits and investments shall be made only in obligations of the United States in the New Hampshire Public Deposit Investment Pool and in New Hampshire banks that are FDIC insured. The following restrictions shall apply to deposits and investments in banks.
So what is it, what does that mean, obligations of the United States?
Treasury bonds and bills.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just not being a finance guy, I.
No more than $2 million shall be deposited or invested without perfected collateral in any one bank.
And perfected collateral kind of means?
That it's fully, fully backed by pledged securities or letters of credit from, from the banks.
I mean, like the FDIC only ensures up to.
Up to 250, 250,000.
Thousand, but you're saying 2 million can be deposited if there's.
It, it actually, this says no more than 2 million shall be deposited without perfected collateral. If we have perfected collateral, there is no limit to what we can deposit.
Right, but, but things, just, people understand things like the FDIC, but that's only 250,000. So perfected collateral is above and beyond the standard FDIC protections.
And a hundred, a hundred percent of our money is in, is, has perfected collateral. That's the way we've been doing it. I don't anticipate any, any changes there. So this policy actually does give us the latitude, should we ever decide it makes any sense financially to, to invest in banks without perfected collateral, as long as those banks meet certain financial guidelines for strength and safety.
Okay, Eileen, did you want to add something?
Yeah, it's just from, from back in the early nineties, when all the banks were failing. Municipality, I don't think any municipality actually lost any money, although there was urban legends about it. But, you know, you had your $250,000, at the time was $200,000 FDIC. And so now, basically, they set aside, so you have $2 million in, in the bank. They actually have to set aside $2 million worth of, of some kind of paper that you can actually collect if the bank closes. So that's basically what it is, is you're 100% guaranteed that you, you wouldn't lose your money.
Okay, thank you. Both of you.
Okay. Finishing up here, the, it says unsecured deposits and investments of more than $100,000 in banks that do not meet at least six of the following credit worthiness ratios are prohibited. And I don't know if you want me to go through these or not.
No. But just, just to point out to people that are watching that, that we're not just tossing this money in any old bank and we're not tossing it in any old deposit.
Exactly.
But we have very strict criteria in how much and where. And there are, what, eight or nine, eight different criteria that have to be, that can be met. And if it's, if it's unsecured, they have to meet at least six of those, right? And if you're going to go up, the next one says if you're going up higher than that, towards a million, you have to meet seven of those criteria as, as a minimum. Or I guess there's nine, because there's another one on the back page. And that's pretty much the investment policy, right?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or thoughts, Barbara?
How many banks do we use?
We currently use six or seven. I'd have to go through them in my mind, but we, yeah, we, our main banking relationship is with Citizens Bank and has been for a long time now. But we also have some cash reserves at other banks in town. Try to maintain some relationships with the other banks just for prudence sake.
And the other reason why we maintain these with local banks in town is because if our main bank ever goes belly up, it's going to take a day, two, three days for us to go, hey, we want our money. This way, if we have a payroll due, we just switch over to one of these local banks and say, we need to write checks on your account. So that's, that's how we look at some of these other branches that we, we use is that they're, they're there in case of emergency and to have, just in case of, like I said, emergency, but also to foster good relationships with other banking communities. Out of the six or seven banks, I think there's only one bank that, two banks that are not in the town of Merrimack. Every other bank we do business with is, definitely has a branch in Merrimack.
Peter?
Tom, how much money do we have invested for the town overall?
Well, I mean, all, all of the, the cash that we have is, is in interest earning accounts. So 100% of it, I mean, right now. I know as of the end of September, the, the cash, the pooled cash balance was about $41 million. It fluctuates from low thirties to as much as high fifties, depending on when the tax revenues come in.
But from that, you're paying payroll and you're paying the school district's expenses and all those things. So that's, it's a very fluid number.
It's a very fluid number, yeah.
Yeah, we go through about, about $7, $8 million a month in expenses. Most of, yeah, over $5 million a month, we pay the school. But we're doing, you know, about $7, $8 million of cash going out. So when we say we have 40 or 50, it doesn't last long.
Thank you.
And our big incomes are taxes, which are twice a year, so. Did you have a question?
Just a, it's kind of an oddball question, but what is our current bond rating, do you know? Do we have a bond rating?
We don't, we do not have a bond rating.
Our last bond rating was double A.
Okay, thank you.
Eileen?
We, most municipalities in New Hampshire don't get rated individually, except for maybe Manchester and Nashua. And the reason why they don't have to is because we all, as I'm sure you've heard, is, over the years, is that we pool our bonds with the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank and they issue bonds twice a year and we go on theirs, which I'm not sure theirs is, they're, they're, they're very highly rated. So the reason why we don't, I'm sure that we would get a very comparable rate because we're so solid financially. But I think that it costs maybe $20,000 or $30,000 to get rated because you, you actually have to pay to get rated. And as long as New Hampshire Bond Bank is already rated, there's no sense in us having to do so, especially since we very rarely do bonds.
Yep, and it's very rarely you're going to get a triple, there's only two communities have a AAA rating in the state. And one of them was Bedford, I don't even know if they kept it. And the other one was Nashua, I believe, or Concord, Nashua or Concord also were AAA. Bond banks, double A, we were double A. It didn't make sense to spend the extra money to get the same rates. And the other thing is, is we also use a state revolving fund, which you can't be, I mean, they're sending out bonds 30 years at one and a half percent. I couldn't sell them for that. So that's why we, we don't go and get a, a rating for the community. It's not financially prudent to get one. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Tom, good?
Good.
You're good? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the council approve the town's investment policy for the investment of public funds held by the town treasurer in accordance with RSA thirty-five colon nine and RSA forty-one colon twenty-nine for the fiscal year 2021-22.
Second. Is that what you need?
Yes.
Okay. Motion was made by Bill and seconded by Peter. All those, if there's no other further questions or comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 700. And someone's going to get us something to sign or put it in the file. Okay. Okay, thank you, Tom, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Which brings us to minutes, but we don't have any minutes tonight. Not sure why, but. Okay. Comments from the press?
I'm not the press.
Comments from the public?
I'm not the public.
Comments from the council? Nancy?
This is just a question. Vaccine, this, Sununu has come out and talked about first responders, of course, being. Have you heard anything from the state in terms of planning for our first responders?
Yeah, I, I had never even heard that yet, which I, I hadn't heard that the governor had given out information.
Perhaps it's proposed, but it's a four-stage. And one of the first ones is.
First responder.
First responder, which is not surprising.
Right, yeah.
Even, you know, that's going to be, but I was curious, you haven't been obviously contacted yet.
I haven't been, but have you, Paul?
I should have asked one, the chief, the new chief is here. Because I know that some of the departments are putting together, asking their fire people, do they, will they be wanting, will they take it if it's offered? And they're keeping a list and they're trying to get the paperwork ready, so that's.
Oh, I see. I'll, I'll speak to the chief tomorrow and see.
If there's anything we can do to facilitate, I guess, is the.
Yeah, so we can get, so we can be ready with the paperwork and stuff.
Because I'm sure the state will have whatever.
Yeah, we want to be shovel ready, right?
That's right. I mean, obviously, they'll have the plan. They're, they're making proposals now, so.
Yeah, I see that in the news, but, but we haven't been contacted directly by anybody. Peter?
I just want to take a minute to recognize the fire department. In the past two weeks, they've gone to three house fires and done a good job on all three cases. That's quite a bit for this town in a two-week time period. I don't remember three structured fires like that. So I want to say thank you to our firefighters and staff and EMTs for their hard work and in dealing with those situations, so.
And it is a major event. When they have to call in backup from other towns, that's all hands on deck and, and they're dealing with it. And they were major structure fires. And hopefully, we don't see more of that. But it's good to have them there to help us in those kind of situations. And so I, I agree, I definitely appreciate their efforts and things of that nature. Anybody else? Town Council, Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Councilor Albert stole a little bit of my thunder, so I just want to amplify his comments and wholeheartedly agree with him. Fire Department deserves a tremendous amount of thanks for, for responding to those calls over the, over the last couple of weeks. Deeply appreciated. I just lost my train of thought. Oh, second thing, yeah, I apologize. To all the members in the community, the planning board, the zoning board, the conservation commission, and all the other committees that we have in town are seeking volunteers to participate. If you have the time to serve on a committee, I would encourage you to reach out to, to Becky Thompson at Town Hall to inquire about the process and get, get a resume into us if you would like to serve on a committee. We really need help on our, on our committees. Obviously, the planning board and the ZBA and the CONCOM dedicate a lot of time to, to their particular roles because they are semi-quasi judicial in, in nature. So there's a little bit more work that's involved for those particular boards in, in terms of addressing the issues that come before them. Some of the more lighter ones, like Heritage Commission and Parks and Rec, you know, equally as valuable, equally as busy. As, as we break out of this pandemic and head into 2021, presents a unique opportunity for people to get involved and participate. So I would encourage you to go to our website at MerrimackNH.gov, explore the vacancies. I'm certain, my phone number's on there. If you have any questions about the boards, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I'm sure any of the councils here, Eileen and, and the team at Town Hall, I'm sure anybody would be available to answer any questions. So kind of call this declaring call to come and, come and serve your community on some of the boards. In that particular aspect, the national or regional planning commission, just, I just learned that Karen Elmer is not seeking a reappointment to the NRPC. And Karen's been a longtime community member here in Merrimack. She's actually, you know, she, she's with our, with the planning department over in Bedford, where, where she continues to, to work there. And she's been absolutely invaluable in providing leadership in Merrimack's perspective at a regional role at the NRPC level. She was chair for a couple of years. And, you know, from a regional perspective, you know, the, this, this area is, is changing. And I think to lose somebody like Karen and, and her ilk and the experience that she brings to the position is going to be sorely missed. So I want to, I wanted to publicly thank Karen Elmer for, for her service and I wish her, wish her health and happiness with her, with her future endeavors. Along those lines, lastly, the planning board met on Tuesday. They amended the project down the south end of town at Edgebrook, which is across, which is proposed across the street from Harris Pond. It's just south of, of Nantacamp and the Nashua Corp. They have amended it, where, where they've redacted the proposed gas station and commercial building. And they are looking to build a store-as-you-go kind of facility at that particular location. So that, that, that site plan will be coming before the planning board in, in the days ahead. So that'll be interesting to see. And Flatley continued their project until January. So I don't have any update on the, on the Flatley project per se, but they anticipate coming forth with new information to the planning board in the first meeting in January, which is, I want to say it's going to be, thank you very much, appreciate it. So anyway, that's all I got and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Bill, not to put you on the spot, but I, I'm wondering just what kind of an argument they could have made that a CUP is, is covered by putting a self-storage unit in instead of the other features.
In the interest of full disclosure, I was the sole lone dissenting vote on that project because I think when you come to a community and you want to do a cup with a vision of mixed, of mixed use, which is what they proposed, I know for people in the community, there was a little bit of trepidation. I looked at it as, as, to me, the need was the gas station and the mini mart there. With all, with, with the projects that are going up at Blanchard Point and Bowers Landing and, and now at Edgebrook, there's, there's a need to, to have that particular service there. And why they're pivoting to, to self-storage, it's going to be, I think, the fifth in our community. And I, you know, I didn't, I didn't raise that argument because it's not my land, I'm not going to tell them what to do. But I certainly expressed from, from an economic development perspective, my disappointment in looking to pivot to that particular use on that particular site because I certainly didn't see the value, the, the value there was having, was having the 12-stall gas station there with the, with the, with the mini mart. I, to me, that's, you know, when you, when you, when you, I mean, when you look at that particular location, outside of going up to Bond Bonds, which is about a mile and a half, you know, up the road, not only would they be servicing that portion of, of South Merrimack, they'd be, you know, servicing the people that live in, in the Hillsbury neighborhoods and the Britton, Britton's Landing neighborhoods of Nashua. Like I said, it's not my property, Mr. Chairman, but I, I really felt there was a missed opportunity and I was not. and I was not shy in telling them that, so.
Great, thank you. Sorry, I appreciate you.
No, no, but I agree with your point, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Comments from the... Barbara, I'm sorry.
Eileen mentioned this earlier, and I just want to reiterate that Merrimack TV announced today, and I know it's on Facebook, I don't know about any other location, that the ability for people to, who are unplugged, right? Because this has been probably where the gap is. If you're unplugged, now you can plug into your Roku and actually watch the meetings and other programs on Merrimack TV. So thank you to Nick and the guys. You did great job.
Yeah, I didn't understand any of that. I heard you make your announcement, but I didn't even know what Roku, or whatever you call that, is.
Roku, Roku is a on-demand. It runs off of cable, not a cable, but off your Wi-Fi. And it hooks to your TV, and you are, you can get all of the programs and stations, usually that you can get on commercial TV, and you stream it.
Yep.
Across your internet connection?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's a streaming TV service like Apple TV and Hulu and Netflix and all the, you know, Disney Plus and all those. It's similar to that, but it's an app. R-O-K-U. Roku, R-O-K-U. No, we're gonna have the... We will get that out. Nicholas is putting together in the next week or so downloadable, step-by-step video and paper. Yeah.
But you can stream Merrimack TV now if you have an internet connection, right?
Correct.
Correct.
But this is in high definition.
Ooh.
It actually, I see that...
It can be. It can be.
Surely they can check out Nancy's hairdo.
They used to call that the Vaseline lens.
It's a lot clearer.
That's right. Put those little blocking...
Justin said he does hair and makeup before.
What's that? I'm sorry. I know, but that's... Used those many days ago. Okay, anybody else have any comments from the council? I just want to reiterate what Eileen pointed out at the beginning of the meeting. We're not trying to flaunt the COVID thing by taking our masks off, those of us that have. It's just extremely difficult for some of us to feel like we're communicating and understood, talking through masks. And so we've spread out farther than normal in order to avoid being close together. When we get up and move around, you'll notice I put my mask on. People will grab their mask if we're gonna get closer than the five or six feet. So we are encouraging everybody to continue to be vigilant relative to COVID-19. It hasn't gone away, and it's not gonna disappear because the vaccine is starting to be distributed. That vaccine will help those people that get it, won't necessarily stop the spread until so many people have gotten it that there's nowhere to spread to. And so it's gonna take quite a while before we get back to normal. So let's all be excited that vaccines are out there and working, but don't give up the ship because we still need to be careful, we still need to be conscientious and responsible for ourselves and those that we're meeting. So if you're feeling bad or sick, don't go mingling with other people and try to stay away from people that are feeling bad or sick to keep yourself healthy. Eileen, you wanted to add something?
I just wanted to let you know that there's over a hundred active cases of COVID in Merrimack right now. So it's everywhere. It's affected some members of our staff and their families. Obviously, they're staying out, so there's not here. But, you know, we're having issues, gaps in coverage with the staff and, you know, people having issues with their kids and going in school, which is very difficult. Mothers with young children whose kids, all of a sudden, out of the blue, don't have school to go to. It's, you know, we're hearty New England people, so we're flugging on through, and we're doing okay. But it's here, and people need to recognize that.
It is here, and as an addition to what you just said, because there are starting to be some gaps in our service availability, please be patient and understand, if you try to come to Town Hall and you want to get to the town manager's office or something, that may be difficult, just because people are having to stay away and, or just getting to the clerk's office. They're open, they're working. But just understand that if it does take a little longer, that's probably due to the issues coming up with COVID and the town's dealing with it just like you are at home. So we're all gonna be patient with each other and make it through this. If there's no other comments from the council?
Motion to adjourn.
So a motion to adjourn from Bill Boyd and seconded by Barbara Healy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. We're adjourned. Please turn off your mics. Thanks.